Good evening, welcome. I call the September 18th, 2024 Planning Commission meeting to order. The main purpose of tonight's meeting is to conduct a study session on the Urban Forest Management Plan and the 2024 Imagine Bothell Comprehensive Plan, Land Use and Housing Elements and Development Regulation. Before we move on to the agenda items, I'd like to acknowledge our hybrid meeting format. The City of Bothell is providing the option to attend this meeting either in person or remotely via Zoom. For those participating via Zoom, the chat and question functions are not available for use to ensure compliance with the Open Public Meeting Act. We have a public comment item at the beginning of the meeting. This time is for comments on issues not scheduled for hearing on tonight's agenda. Please limit these comments to three minutes. Please note that the City of Bothell does not tolerate verbal harassment. Please remember this during your comments. Public comment will be allowed both in person and via Zoom. Those wishing to comment via Zoom were asked to submit an online form by 3:00 PM today. People wishing to submit written comments were also asked to submit those comments by 3:00 PM. Email was encouraged as well and will be acknowledged. Those in attendance may also make comments and have been asked to indicate their desire to comment on in the sign-in sheets. The Imagine Bothell notice, city website, and tonight's agenda all provide information to the public for providing comments. The video of this meeting will be streamed live as well as recorded and available for later viewing on the city's YouTube channel. A call-in number was provided on the meeting's agenda for members of the public who wish to call in by phone to listen live to the meeting. For our phone-in callers during staff presentations, staff will make every effort to specify which materials they are referencing so everyone can follow along. At this point, we will take a moment to acknowledge the attendance of the commissioners. We are missing today Chair Kiernan and as well as Sarah Guffsterson has joined us online. And is Commissioner Jones coming in today? Did she indicate?
She might be arriving a little late.
A little bit late, okay. Okay. So we'll continue with attendance. Commissioner Lieber?
Here.
Commissioner Westerbeck?
Here.
Commissioner Sills?
Here.
And I'm Commissioner Robson. Commissioner Guffsterson?
Here.
Okay. Also with us today are Deputy Director Geitz, Planner Cameron Colvin via Zoom, Jesse Hartman from Burke Consulting, and we have some new staff to be introduced today.
Yeah, I wanted to take a moment to recognize a couple of new staff in the planning department. We're joined here in the room by Eric Jezuski and online Ray Sosa. Both new senior planners that started at the beginning of the month and wanted to give them a quick opportunity to introduce themselves.
I'll go first. Hi, Commissioners, my name is Eric Jezuski. I'm a Senior Planner in Community Development's Long Range Planning Team. Thank you for having me here and I will look forward to seeing Planning Commission in the future. But a little about me, I've been a planner for over 10 years. Most of that time I worked for Pierce County and Pierce Transit, a little further south here. I also spent several years with the City of San Francisco as a planner, transportation planner, land use planner there. Just quasi-work-related trivia about me, I really nerd out on urban design and rail transit. So, you know, when I'm out in my regular life or traveling, I love to check out those things. So that's it, thank you.
And Ray is joining us virtually, there we go.
Yeah, hi, everyone, good afternoon. My name is Ray Sosa. I am also like Eric, a new Senior Planner here, working in long range. So one of the tasks that I'll be working on will be on the Housing Action Plan, amongst many other other items, including finishing up the comp plan process. A little bit about me, so I kind of have a unique background. I actually started my planning career as a teacher. I was a public school teacher for several years. And so from there, I transitioned to working in safe after-school, working on all projects after-transportation. I was previously in Denver for the last eight years. And so now I'm here in the Puget Sound. I'm really excited to be here in the region and helping get this work done. So thank you for having me here.
Thank you, welcome to both of you. Lastly, before we begin, I'd like to reiterate some meeting guidelines. For all meeting attendees, please speak clearly and pause frequently. State your name each time before speaking. Mute your microphone when not speaking. If you are also streaming the live video feed, please turn the sound off as there is a delay. For the Commissioners, at specific breaks in the presentation, I will be calling on members who wish to speak or ask a question. If you want to speak, please indicate this by raising your hand. I will call on you as I see you. This will help avoid the problem of two people speaking at the same time. Identify yourself before you ask a question, make a motion or second a motion, or participate in debate. Please mute your microphone when not speaking. The first item on the agenda is public comment. The city has accepted visitor comment in writing as well as accepted sign-up sheets for those who wish to speak at tonight's meeting. Thank you. Those speaking will have three minutes. Written comments submitted to staff no later than 3:00 PM today and were forwarded to all Commissioners and are part of the record. I believe that those were for, we received a few brief emails that were entered into the record today. This is the time for items that are not on tonight's agenda. If there are any Zoom commenters, we will call on them one at a time. And again, comments are for up to three minutes. So I see we have Mark Swanson today. If you want to step to the podium?
I'm going to start tonight, as I do many times when I attend council or the Planning Commission, is I'm going to request the recusal of former and current Bothellites for People Oriented Places membership. It's my opinion that this is violating the appearance of fairness doctrine and maybe violating the conflict of interest, maybe not as delineated in the Bothell Municipal Code, but certainly in the RCW, which has an umbrella application of jurisdiction to conflict of interest. Furthermore, today, the Appearance of Conflict Doctrine states specifically in the RCW Code that even the appearance of impropriety must be avoided. Even the appearance must be avoided. At this point during my public comment, I'd like to demand that the City Attorney make a city declaration that there is no, that they've found that there is no conflict of interest in association with Mr. Kerry Westerbeck. I'm demanding this to the City Attorney and be placed in the city record as a declaration of finding by the city. Now, Bothellites for People Oriented Places, personally, I like, I think that's a misnomer. It really should be Bothellites for Profit-Oriented Planning. They're identified as a subchapter of StrongTowns.org. StrongTowns.org is run by an individual who only has a Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering. Now, not to denigrate either the occupation or the degree, but he doesn't have any education in biology, climate, or economic science. There is not one place, or very few, in the country where urban density has contributed to either economic resilience or saving the climate. The recommendations of StrongTowns.org is anti-science and goes directly against our comprehensive plan. Now, I want to take this opportunity to state that city buses produce 100 to 200 times more tire wear particles and thus the 6PPD quenone pollutant,
20 seconds.
which causes acute mortality to our Koho salmon. When we're talking about the Puget Sound being honored this month, it's not because we're killing Koho as my email to you about Professor Jill McIntyre, Professor of WISU of the Environment, clearly states it's the 6PPD quenone that's killing the salmon and threatening the South Podocars. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments today. Okay, we can let the record show that Commissioner Jones has joined us. We're so happy to have her. All good. Are there any, is there anyone online who wants to make a comment? Okay, I'm seeing no. Okay, then we will continue. Okay, next steps, approval of September 4th minutes. Deputy Director Geitz has appended the minutes to answer some of the questions that we discussed at the meeting. There's some nice inclusion in that. And so I hope you were all able to glance at it before we started. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
Okay. Commissioner Sills, I move to approve.
Great.
Commissioner Jones, second.
Okay, is there any discussion over that? Moved and seconded? No, okay. Then, then all those in favor of approving the minutes?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, so it seems like we have a unanimous agreement on that. Thank you for your patience with my struggling through this. Okay, so we did the approval of minutes. Next, we will start the study session of Urban Forest Management Plan. Led today, yes. Take your head, thank you.
Give me one moment to get my screen shared here. All right, is everyone able to see that online? My name is Cameron Colvin. I'm a long-range planner in community development and I'll be providing a brief overview tonight on the upcoming Urban Forest Management Plan work that we are kicking off. So no actions required tonight. This is mainly an opportunity to get this project on your radars and kind of talk through the anticipated scope and get some initial input and feedback from you all, initial thoughts or considerations that we should take into account as we kind of go through this process. So just to quickly set the stage, Bothell has a long history of kind of forestry in the area. Logging played a major role in our local economy in the late 1800s. But during that time, we lost a large amount of our older, larger, more mature trees. So by as early as the early 1900s, many of these logging operations had declined and transitioned to more of an agricultural-based economy. If we fast forward to today, obviously, many of our community members enjoy and advocate for the preservation of Bothell's natural resources. Bothell's been recognized as a Tree City USA since 2000. And there are many ongoing efforts to preserve and replant trees throughout the city, both by the city itself as well as many community partners throughout the community. So as we know, trees provide a multitude of benefits to the community. They not only beautify the city, but help contribute to cleaner air. Through carbon sequestration, they help fight against climate change. They provide much-needed shade and relief from warming temperatures. They absorb lots of water and help reduce stormwater runoff, provide habitat for animals, and have been shown to also contribute to improve mental health and higher property values. So why do we need a citywide Urban Forest Management Plan? So this was something that was initially identified as part of City Council's 2040 Vision. Particularly, they were interested in identifying areas of town where we are lacking tree trees currently, and then also establishing programs to help protect older, more mature trees on private property through things like a heritage tree program. These priorities from the City Council vision were incorporated in our most recent comprehensive plan update. So there's multiple goals throughout that plan that relate to tree retention, preserving and expanding tree canopy cover, and reducing conflicts with sidewalks, roadways, and other utilities. So the Urban Forest Management Plan work will be a great opportunity to gather some necessary data and information that we need, get community input, and really establish a framework for implementation of how we manage trees within the city. So this work will be funded through a combination of funding sources, one of which is a climate planning grant that we received from the Department of Commerce last year. This grant not only is supporting this work, but also helped fund our electric vehicle study that is wrapping up, that was presented to council last night. It helps support getting the climate element incorporated in our comprehensive plan, and it'll be supporting our upcoming greenhouse gas emissions work and climate action plan. That will be coming back to you all with some more details on shortly. And then we're supplementing that grant funding with American Rescue Plan Act funding as well. So we have issued a RFP to bring on a consultant to support with some of the more technical aspects of this work, which I'll go into here shortly. The, we anticipate that most of the work will be completed between now and June 30th, which is when we have particular deliverables due to the Department of Commerce. There may be a few aspects of this work, such as the street tree inventory that I'll go into details about that may carry on a little longer. But a majority of the work, we anticipate, will be completed by the end of next year. This will be a collaborative process across multiple city departments. So community development will be kind of leading this initiative with support from Public Works, Parks and Recreation, and our GIS department. And then we'll be providing periodic updates throughout the process to you all as well as the Parks and Recreation Board and City Council. So the City of Bothell, we're not the first ones to develop a citywide tree plan. Couple of examples from neighboring jurisdictions are the City of Shoreline, City of Kirkland, as well as City of Seattle all have similar kind of plans in place. So I'll go through kind of how we envision this project moving forward. We've kind of broken it into four primary task or phases with kind of ongoing community engagement throughout to get plan input and feedback. So first off, we'll be kind of taking a fresh look at our existing development regulations and construction and design standards as they relate to tree preservation, comparing those with neighboring jurisdictions to identify some best practices and identifying any potential gaps or areas for improvement. This is also an opportunity for us to pull in goals from related plans. So our Stormwater Master Plan, obviously, is going to have a lot of tie-in, our Parks and Recreation Plan, Comprehensive Plan work. And then we can also align it with regional efforts. King County's put together a great 30-year forest plan that can really help inform this work. Next, we'll be updating some tree canopy data, which basically shows tree cover and how it's distributed throughout the city. So the map I have up on your screens is from a 2016 tree canopy assessment that was conducted in partnership with the King County Conservation District. Since that time, we've had some technological advances and kind of better ways about combining some of the aerial imagery as well as LiDAR and topographic information to get a little better accuracy and detail. So as part of this work, we'll be updating that to really get a better baseline for us to track canopy change and progress over time. So then we can look back and say, okay, after so many years, you know, we've seen a lot of development. Have we seen tree canopy as a whole stay about the same? Increase, decrease, et cetera? So at the time of that 2016 study, about 45% of Bothell has tree cover. And, you know, a lot of that is due to our critical areas, our many wetlands and forested areas that are preserved throughout the city. So some of the work to update this tree canopy data has already begun. Our Stormwater and Surface Waters Department is in the process of updating their master plan. And as part of that work, they have worked on an updated tree canopy layer. So we'll kind of be taking that, cleaning up some of the 2016 data so we can have a better apples-to-apples comparison to really see, okay, what changes have we seen in Bothell over the past 10 years? And then how do we use that to kind of predict moving forward to inform, you know, do we need to amend our tree preservation regulations to help preserve trees throughout Bothell? So next, we'll also be conducting a street tree inventory. So this is more on-the-ground work to record locations of street trees along public roadway. They'll not only be collecting the location of the trees, but also information such as species, the size and age of the tree, any potential maintenance needs that are there, and then also identifying any existing conflicts such as cracks in the sidewalk that may have occurred from root growth or conflicts with overhead utility lines. So I've got an example on the screen from the City of Bellevue, who has a similar street tree inventory. And the real idea behind this is for this to be a resource for our operations team to prioritize, you know, getting field workers out there to do pruning, replacing dying or diseased trees or any surrounding infrastructure work that might need to take place. So kind of based on the findings of all of that work, we can pinpoint what the main community needs are. So potentially areas throughout town that are lacking street trees, holes in the existing code that could use improvement. And from there, we can kind of identify specific strategies that we look to implement. Through this process, we'll kind of also have a detailed implementation plan. So identifying responsible city departments to engage and implement this work, anticipated timelines, and potential costs associated with those actions. And then this will also provide us with a, the framework for tracking progress over time. So like, how frequently do we need to update our tree canopy data moving forward, given technological advancements to track progress? And then finally, I've just got a couple of slides focused on community engagement. So I don't know if Gabby and our communications team have been before you all to share this resource, but they have put together a really great resource for staff to use called our Community Engagement Toolkit, which establishes kind of engagement principles for the city. But it also provides some guidance in terms of best practices and mediums for depending on the type of information we're looking for. So, you know, there's differences in when we want to provide an educational opportunity versus when we want more targeted input on goals or initiatives that the city is undertaking. So we'll be incorporating this into our outreach and engagement plan for this project. We will be developing a more detailed outreach plan once we have a selected consultant onboard. We do plan to continue to utilize the Engage Bothell platform as we did for the comprehensive plan for this work. Got a lot of great engagement through that platform and feedback. So great resource to carry forward. We also heard during the comprehensive plan update process that a lot of our participants really enjoyed the in-person, smaller workshops where we're able to have some more substantive discussions. So we'd like to incorporate those as best as possible as well. Obviously, it is a great opportunity to continue our partnerships with the local tribes to continue that engagement work. And then just some general other ideas that we have for kind of community engagement would include things like a community survey, opportunities for residents to identify significant trees in their neighborhood, either through like online mapping exercise or potentially like a social media campaign. And then doing more like tree planting events, tree giveaways, that type of thing, which I think our Parks Department has some planned in October and then in April for Arbor Day, Earth Day events as well. And then one other resource I was just going to make you all aware of is the Tree Equity Score Map, which is a resource that American Forest put together, which overlays existing tree canopy data with census block data to identify areas that lack trees, but also have marginalized communities, lower-income areas, that we should pay particular attention to. So I was just gonna, I'll see if I can reshare my screen here with you all so you can see that in a little more detail. So yeah, this is a neat resource. Obviously, it's at the census block level, so it's not very neighborhood-specific, but can at least give us a general idea of where we may need to do some more targeted outreach. But yeah, if you just scroll over different census blocks, it can kind of explain what goes into the Tree Equity Score. So a lower Tree Equity Score would signify areas that are potentially lacking tree cover and then also have populations such as a higher percentage of people of color, children or seniors, or lower income. So with that, I will kind of open it up for initial thoughts, any questions that you all have or considerations that we should take into account as we kind of get started. As I mentioned, we do currently have the request for proposals out to bring on a consultant. We're expecting that to wrap up by early October. And then that'll really like kick off a substantial portion of the work.
Yes, Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Commissioner Jones. First off, this is fantastic that you're updating this. And I really appreciate, one, that you explained the Tree Equity Score because I was curious as to what that was when I saw it in the packet. And then, two, that you're focused also on policies and practices to prevent things from happening moving forward, which is terrific. I had a couple of questions, just more informational questions. So one was, the Tree Equity Score, like you said, is at the census tract level and it's great because it gives you a first sense. But have you thought about identifying particular local locations? local locations where you might want to spend more time looking at the tree cover in those areas, maybe on the ground? And I'm thinking of, you know where there is some low-income housing, or trailer parks, or senior centers, or and places where often they don't have air conditioning and those types of things. So that was one question. I have two other questions. Do you want me to wait in between each?
Sure, I can answer the first one. So I talked a little bit about updating our tree canopy data. And one portion that I didn't really get to, but part of that work will also be to do a bit more detailed of an equity analysis. So to get better information than maybe what we have through the Tree Equity Score. And similarly, through the street tree inventory, we can kind of pinpoint areas of town where we're lacking street tree cover and maybe target more specific areas. But that'll really inform kind of where we can do some more targeted outreach.
Yeah, I was thinking targeted outreach, but also when you, you're probably going to end up having to prioritize which gaps you're going to want to go fill in. And it's going to be nice maybe to hear about, not now, but the prioritization scheme that you'll use, because these are some of the factors that you might want, might be able to include. So thank you. The second question I had was, besides, yes, tree locations, urban forests are good locations for certain kinds of species, et cetera. It's habitat for species. But there's also migration patterns. And as we develop, we affect those, we could affect those migration patterns or not, depending on how we develop. Is that going to be part of the study, looking at migration of particular species?
We didn't include that in the initial RFP, but it's potentially something we could discuss once we have a consultant brought onboard. Yeah, we anticipate, especially with climate change, that that will impact native habitats and also migration over time. So really, it's important for us to choose tree species in particular that are going to be able to withstand those changes in temperature and climate over time. And then kind of the animals and species will migrate over time to where they best fit, if that makes sense.
Oh, exactly. And I was, with all of this data, particularly what you're doing on the ground within, you know, looking at specific types of species and how healthy they are and things like that, that's exactly right. That's what I was thinking, that it would be nice, if it's possible, I mean, everything costs money, but to think about those migration patterns in a changing climate. And that might influence other kinds of planning decisions down the road. And so the last question I had was, I don't know if it's a question or if it's a comment, but so the type of work that the consultants are going to be doing and the city is doing is perfect work to incorporate community science and have kids in high schools or middle schools, or the community college, or the college, be part of some of that on-the-ground work that could then continue over time in between when you have the consultants there. And I don't know if this, again, a lot of this is also volunteer, but but you do need to have someone to coordinate. So I realize it costs money, but it is a way to really engage the community at a level that's lasting.
Yeah, that was one thing that we did think about as we're kind of initially thinking through ideas for community engagement, was particularly with the street tree inventory, if we could do some like guided in-the-field tours and work. Yeah, a lot of the technologies come a long way, so it makes it fairly easy for someone to download an app on their phone. And we can just have a facilitator there to kind of go walk them through the process and then kind of like tackle a larger area as a group, which is, would be good. But yeah, that is something we've thought about and a great suggestion.
Yes, Commissioner Lever.
Thank you. I just want to second everything that Commissioner Jones said. Thank you very much. Great questions. And thank you for the presentation. Super helpful. My question is around coordination of local efforts. Can you help me understand how King County and Snohomish County will be partnering with the city of Bothell? Or what their input will be in terms of making sure that sometimes it's the same goal and they have, they might have other resources that we can leverage?
Yeah, so a couple of different ways. So King County, as I mentioned, has a thirty-year forest plan. And they also have a urban forestry forum for staff at each of the municipalities that meet on a monthly basis to kind of coordinate on urban forestry work such as this. So that is a great opportunity for us to share what is going on in the city of Bothell and also learn from other communities. And they also use it as an opportunity where there are potential to leverage resources, combine on grant applications or things like that. That's a good avenue for that.
And then the second, the second question or comment is around the engagement piece and how we can leverage social media to really make sure that we sort of really try to use not only maybe our own modes of communication, but even the counties, if we don't happen to have everything that we need. And the maps as well, in terms of the decision-making, like through the, since I joined the commission, I know we have a lot of data. And then when it comes to looking at the impact of one decision over the other, I really highly encourage you to make sure that we do have an interactive tool that would allow us to see the impact of one over the other, knowing that we have to prioritize to remove our own personal bias of our personal preference.
Yeah, one thing I guess I can go ahead and mention. So through our Engage Bothell platform, there are opportunities for that. I think we tested out a little bit of the capabilities through our comprehensive plan update and some of the surveying. But with kind of moving forward into the next year, we'll have some additional features that we can utilize to better have engagement through like a mapping interface that I think will be useful for this work.
Yes, Commissioner Sills.
Yeah, Commissioner Sills, I appreciate this work. Thank you for briefing us. I, at one point, participated in a webinar, and I don't know what department it was, but it was all about gardening and like native species and how to think about planting, which is great because I don't have a green thumb. And it was just really insightful. And so I'd love to see kind of to the point of educational opportunities so that if there are, you know, private owners that have trees on their land, you know, be able to understand how to maintain them, what signs to look out for, if they're unhealthy, all those sorts of things. And just in general, if the city can think about how to encourage that. And, and then, you know, when it comes to development, like we absolutely want to maintain the tree canopy and take that seriously. But do we have any, you know, you mentioned logging. Do we have any sort of historical look back to know how much of the tree canopy was taken away from single-family developments? Because I feel like, you know, all of a sudden, we care about trees when we're talking about, let's say, housing or middle housing. And it would just be nice to sort of know, you know, how it was impacted by that sort of development, too.
Yeah, that's a good point. There's potential to look at old historical, like aerial imagery, but that only goes back so far and the resolution's not super great. So we'll be primarily relying on kind of more recent data. But you make a really good point, and I think that's reflected in our current code as well, that we have really good protections for new development. But as soon as that transfer occurs to private ownership, there's a lot more leniency. And that's where we see kind of our larger trees get removed. And so we really want to encourage, you know, private citizens, if it's not causing any conflicts or potential hazards to your house, to really try to preserve those trees that are there.
Commissioner Westerback.
Thanks, Commissioner Westerback. Well, this is really encouraging. It's great to see. Being around town, like people ask me all the time, are you guys doing a tree plan? What are you doing to preserve trees? Is there a tree program, whatever? And of course, I know we have stuff in the code. I deal with it, mitigation efforts and stuff. But anyway, this is great. I think this is going to make a lot of people happy that we're kind of approaching it. My angle, I'm always thinking about, our own Davina Duer, state representative, she used to be a city council member. She had a legislative bill last year that didn't make it through, but it was a tree bank idea. And I hope that we'll maybe explore that. The idea being, we're going to have this tension between, we really need to build housing. Like we're going to talk about tonight, the land use element and everything. And we're going to just, we're going to see more trees come down and more land developed. And that's good. We need that. We need homes. And, and so right now, we have the mitigation in the, in the land use code and everything. But I love the tree bank idea because it's like the transfer of development rights. You know, I'm sure you're familiar with this as a planner. So I hope we'll explore that a little bit, because it's going to be sometimes, you know, better for society for us to allow someone to put up that apartment building or something like that. And trees are going to come down. We see, oh, we all see them coming down all the time. And then knowing that, okay, there's other places in town, whether it's on private property, but more often on public property where we could boost the tree canopy. And like a lot of things, it might be fee-in lieu, it might be a fund they have to pay into where they trade or whatever. But I feel like it's more moving the trees around in that case. And so there's a net, hopefully, there's a net gain and a net loss. But that allows that, that, you know, housing to go in. And I'm sure it would have some trees, too. But sometimes the mitigation's like, wow, how are you going to squeeze it all on here? Or, you know, I know we have some mechanisms for that. But I just think it'd be a really important tool for us to have as we, as we develop and we get more dense as a city, knowing where we're going to be in 2044. And maybe we have that, and I just haven't seen it. But yeah, I thought it was pretty clever.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next up, we have a 2024 Imagine Bothell Comprehensive Plan Land Use and Housing Elements and Develop Regulation brought to us by, and let me get these titles correct. These are the things that trip me up. By Deputy Director Getz and Jesse Hartman from Bark Consulting.
Okay, we're back. It's good to see everybody after the summer break. So we're here tonight to reboot, re-kick off the comp plan work and go through what's been revised since the summer. Tonight, we're going to talk about the land use element, the housing element, and then kind of briefly touch on the development zoning regulation updates that have to happen. No action tonight, just looking for feedback. And we'll pause throughout this, after the land use element, after the housing, kind of just recap. And then at the end, after kind of a brief intro to what the the zoning regulations might include. To reframe everything, we're towards the very, very end. We're in the final push, the final sprint, as many are calling it, to get through to our final EIS, our final sub-area plans, the final development regulations after the work that got us through the summer with the preferred alternative, which council accepted the findings, conclusions, and recommendations from the Planning Commission, carried those forward with a resolution, approving that resolution at the end of July. So we've got that, that benchmark there. And we are looking forward to reaching the required finish line by the end of this year. So hoping to make it there. I think we will. Tonight, we're just going to talk about land use and housing. We're going to come back next time. October, it'll be October third. Normally, it'd be an October second meeting, but we're going to meet on October third to go through the remaining elements. And, and then get a little bit more information on the development regulation standards. The majority, the reason why we're kind of grouping this together this way is the majority of the changes from the draft released in April to now occurred in the land use and housing elements. Everything else, there was, you know, a few references here or there. So we can kind of breeze through those, hopefully, make sure we're getting final eyes on those. So these slides are really just a refresher to kind of run through with, with both Planning Commission and then kind of redo this again with council in a couple of weeks, or in a week, to identify, two weeks, sorry. It is September, not October yet. To, to, to make sure everyone's on the same page with where we're at. So the land use is the fundamental base for everything else in the comp plan and then everything else that follows with the zoning regulations. And it's guided through the GMA requirements in the multi-county, county-wide and county-wide, multi-county and county-wide planning policies. And it'll guide us through the next, next twenty years. The map on the left should be pretty familiar with, to you. This was the final draft proposal for the flume or flum, depending on how you want to pronounce it. It's up to you. Giving us the final land use designations to build the first layer of what the future of Bothell will, will look like. The majority of this remained the same with some, with some minor to mid-level changes. We maintained the manufactured home consistency in the designation. We redesignated all of the R-7200 zones to residential medium instead of residential low. And I'll show another map here in a second that you'll probably remember of the change area. Increasing some of the FAR requirements in the mixed-use neighborhood and mixed-use center areas. And then a few other, a few other items here. But areas have changed. This is really the bulk of where we're going to hopefully focus our attention with the development regulation conversation. This was where, what allowed us to, to establish the capacities. I'm going to touch on those here in a second. To achieve our target goals, exceed our target goals, but create the capacity. And the majority of that was that RL to RM, the orange areas. And then there were just those few little tiny ones, the slight purple up off 228th near the, I think it's called the FEMA site. And a couple others throughout the city. So our targets that were adopted, a total of 12,782 new housing units spread between King and Snohomish Counties. This chart should look familiar, running through the income band. So the required targets weren't just a flat number. It broke it down into affordability levels throughout the spectrum to make sure we have, we build in the capacity to accommodate those units. In addition, on the far right are the permanent supportive housing numbers, the fifteen hundred and fifteen hundred and forty total, that we have to also make sure we're anticipating. This just breaks it down a little bit more, more simply as far as where we've established the capacity based on the target with our surplus for the various groupings, the zero to eighty, eighty to one-twenty, and greater than one-twenty for both Snohomish, King County, north to south there. The thought behind that was to create enough capacity to accommodate the, the anticipated growth patterns and create really a large enough bucket so that we have some, we have a relief valve should we need to go that route after our first five years of monitoring. So the New Comp Plan requirements included an implementation plan, which has a monitoring, tracking. And so we'll be reporting out at the five-year mark to identify if we're meeting our targets. And then part of what hopefully we'll have is additional capacity within to accommodate changes if necessary. to accommodate changes if necessary. Um, if we hit it right and we're on target, then maybe nothing will have to change, but we'll see when we get there. Um, I guess I'll stop there real quick just to see if, and I can pull up the, the, the attachments if we need to, to touch on specific sections of the update. So, the, 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 the majority of those revisions within the land use element, they, they included, um, the removal of alternatives, or the no alternative, alternative 1, 2 and 3, and inserted the preferred alternative, which was that hybrid. Um, so that's where the majority of those, those language changes occurred. Um, if there, if there aren't any questions at this point, we can go on through housing, um, and then touch on them, touch on questions at the end if, if that works, but. Um, briefly, just looking at housing, you know, this, this is the, that next level, uh, you know, what the, what the goals were, increasing that, that housing supply, establishing a, a greater diversity in housing types through the requirements within the legislation that was passed. Um, the city's fortunate that we, we passed the, the middle housing ordinance earlier in the year, so that was one part of, of the, the checklist that we needed to do. Um, so we, we, we've established that, um, but we'll continue on through the, through the zoning, the zoning work, um, and, uh, hopefully work through establishing the, the mechanisms to actually create, um, these, this variety of housing. Um, and really just to accommodate the draft, the draft plan housing goals, um, making sure that there, there, there are, um, a, a, a variety of opportunities throughout the city, it's not focused in one area, it is distributed, that's, you know, primarily what it seemed like the conversations led to, um, to not focus it in the centers or not focus it in the neighborhoods, to, to look at citywide, how can we accommodate and, and sprinkle it throughout. The, the last, uh, piece to touch on tonight, the, the zoning and development regulations, this is gonna be the more complicated, uh, complex piece to, to go through, where we, where the, the rubber hits the road on, on what it actually will look like, so taking the, the slew of various zones, um, that were impacted, so within that change of use, change, the change areas map, the zones that are currently established on this map will need to be revised because they were all single, they were, the majority of them were single-family zones. So those have to be reestablished to a different zone type, a zone type that can achieve the density that we need to, to then be able to accommodate and, and hit our targets. Um, but there's a range there, and so that's where we'll look for input from planning commission and council on what that, that range will, will look like. There are a few other, um, mandatory updates, um, that we, we will have to include, um, some were discussed in the, in the, the staff memo, uh, we'll also have to include the unit lot subdivision, um, per, a, a new unit lot subdivision option, very similar to what we have, which is called a, um, I'm blanking on the name, it's, it's, it's a little unique, but it, it may, it'll, it'll modify that a little bit, uh, updating some of our definitions around, uh, eliminate, the elimination of the unrelated persons, um, language that we have in there. Um, and then looking at, uh, looking at, sorry, the, um, I'm blanking on that, that, that piece, um, the, the, the permanent supportive housing, uh, currently, we look at allowed residential uses and we, we interpret that to mean, yes, you can have permanent supportive housing as any residential use, um, but the, the thought is that we will make it a very clear and distinct, this is an allowed use wherever we allow residential uses. So there are no questions, there's no confusion, um, making that very, very clear. Um, and, and this is just a sort of a primer, so we're gonna come back with a full list of what those, those development regulations will include, what the language will look like, uh, in a track changes document. Uh, the main question that we actually have tonight is about the zoning updates and the scope. So, it's kind of a go really, really big or very limited. So, a, a large approach is reassignment and re-designation. So reassignment meaning current zoning may be 7,200, that's one that is within the area that changed, it needs a new zoning designation at a greater density. Uh, a re-designation might be a zone that did not change under the future land use map, but there's a, there's some best practices that we could apply that would lead to updating that, that zoning in, in name only essentially. Um, that's a bigger lift, uh, staff's recommending to, to look at more of a limited update that is potentially phased, so recognizing there's, there's still some work to do in the future. Typically, what would happen with a, a comprehensive plan update is we'd have six months after the update to go through a longer process, uh, and, and get that completed by mid-June, uh, or mid, mid-year, in June. Uh, our thought is that we would take sort of the, the holistic list that Burke Consulting is providing to us, break it apart into the, the limited update scope first, get that done, check the box for what commerce is requiring, what the legislation is requiring, and then move on to, uh, the second phase, which is kind of cleaning up and re, reconfiguring the code a little bit. All the same information, just in a slightly different package, a little bit used, easier to use, but time is short and we wanna make sure that we can achieve that. So, that was kind of our, our, our main question tonight, um, other than, do you have any thoughts, questions, um, comments on the land use, housing, and then the, the mandatory updates? And I can pull up the, any, any of the slides or the, um, the packet materials if, if we want specific pages to, to talk through.
Commissioner Jones, um, well, thank you for going with the hybrid alternatives, that looked really nice. Can you pull up the map that shows that? That would be awesome. Uh, yes, yes. Um, so I don't know if this question is really aligned with the question you were asking, so you tell me, but I don't think we asked this question before, I didn't ask this question before. So, it's, so we're gonna have increased density throughout the city, um, but concentrated in certain, well, spread across the city, but, but the denser housing is kind of along major arterials and places where we know there's going to be upgraded, uh, public transit and things like that, right? Those are the purplish areas, right?
Correct, and, and those were, were unchanged, the, the, the density in, for the majority of the city, it accommodated the, the targets already.
Okay, so, so can you point out on this map where there's increased density?
So it's on, it's on the following.
Okay, so it's those locations.
So this was where the, the, the changes occurred, uh, which primarily is in neighborhoods, it's in, you know, went from low residential to medium residential.
So, so the question I have is, will, will the zoning changes allow for the types of non-housing amenities that a denser community might like? So, I guess what I'm saying is being able to walk to a small grocery store, being able to have a little cafe close by, uh, will, what you're suggesting, you know, that approach, will that allow for that type of environment?
And, and that was on the, the list of, um, through conversations with, with planning commission, with council on, I think, neighborhood stores or, or, um, corner stores, I think is, is kind of how it's been identified, to, to allow those throughout residential neighborhoods.
Specifically the residential.
Specifically the residential medium, yes. Um, along with, um, the, the, I think, believe it's the mayor who made it very clear, wanting to make sure, um, family daycare, child, child daycare could be allowed within single fam- which we do allow as a, as a family daycare, which has a limited scope and scale based on, um, the state requirements. Um, so there is a, a threshold, it's maybe not necessarily a, a kinder care or something a little bit larger, um, currently, um, but that's something that, that could be, could be discussed, um, to exceed that.
And so the s- the simpler approach to the zoning allows for that type of development? Cause you said there, you're thinking of two approaches to some of the zoning changes?
The, the, the more complicated would be to, to go citywide, where there, there would be updates to renaming all the zones. So, for example, um, there's, in, in the, say, this band in the, in the very middle, uh, is Maywood and, and, and north. So there are a couple of zones within there, the R8,400 and the R9,600. There's also R8,400 and R9,600 that are not within that area elsewhere, that were not affected by these changes, um, for, for various reasons that off the top of my head, I can't really recall. Um, so, but, but the thought was, we would, we could look at a renaming of that to align with a more consistent code hierarchy, if you will, of, uh, a, and, and that would go beyond that though, it would go to the, the mixed use, the commercial districts and, and renaming those as well.
That's great, thank you. I, so it's more of a renaming than it is a change to what's allowed in certain areas, et cetera.
Um, Jesse Hartman with Burke Consulting. Uh, so some of it is, like, the, the full piece would be kind of renaming across your zones, um, the more limited one might be that you have, um, maybe some, the renaming of, of like res- your zones that apply to residential low and medium areas on the land use map, and within those residential medium areas, um, or within the zones that apply for those low and medium, there's gonna be some changes to the, uh, the use to allow maybe the corner stores for medium, but also, um, you're gonna get some changes around the, the kind of the bulk and the lot size and units per lot that are consistent with what the, the land use designations would require. So, um, I don't wanna get too much into the weeds, but you're co- with the, with the zones now, they're all kind of named, the residential ones are named based on your square footage and those, even with your middle housing, uh, regu- revisions aren't applicable anymore, they've, they've changed. So stripping some of that away could help reduce the confusion, um, but still give you a kind of, a, a di- a few different zones within residential low and medium that would, um, implement those land use designations. So, the answer, the short answer is yes, that corner stores, um, would be accounted for within the residential medium zones. Um, and then the other piece that Christian was getting at is that kind of like, we can limit it to these areas specifically right now, uh, or you can go to that more citywide whole look all at once, that would probably happen after, so the, the staff preferred, you can jump in at any point here to cut me off, but, since I'm not staff, but, um, staff's prefer- preferred approach is to do what you need to now to align in these areas and then make that kind of whole update later, or soon, as, when I say later, I mean soon, but after December.
It would, yeah.
There's no state requirement for it to be within six months now, but it should be next phase.
Yeah. So we'd have, we'd have some flexibility in, in when that, that phase two would, would take place, cause you can start to unwrap the, the onion and realize there's a lot of complexity within it. And, and so, that's the, kind of the, the fear with the, the looming end of your deadline to wrap up the requirements that we wanna make sure that we can achieve, uh, given we're so close to that. Um, and then give the due time to that phase two of, here's, here's the, here's the, the additional recommendations from Burke on what can be done, so we, we kind of have that primed and ready to go, um, while still going through downtown sub-area housing action. So, I mean, there's some other, there's some other plans that are coming along the way, and so we wanna make sure that downtown is gonna be looking at, you know, what those recommendations are and integrating them and not doing it in a silo, so, um, yeah.
Commissioner Lever?
Um, thank you. My question is around the impact, and I'm gonna try to do my best to explain my question. So, when it comes to one approach versus the other, and you just changed it in the zones that were, were highlighted here, so if I own a home and my, uh, use change, cause then I decided to do something else with my residential home, but then my neighbor, Commissioner Robinson over here, happens to have the same designation, but we didn't change it because it was outside the areas that we're targeting, then who loses? Like, if she doesn't wanna do any, there's not losing and gaining, but in terms of development, like, we wanna make sure that as we grow, that we can really attract the businesses and the level, developers, so they can help us grow. But if, then I'm, am I gonna be limited by not having that same use if someone wanted to approach me and say, hey, let's open up this daycare too, but then I can't, like, what's the lag time to then do a zoning change if I decided to do that as well, as a, as an, on my own per se, like, just going through the regular zoning change request? Um, do, do we foresee any, can we even think what that scenario may look like as we start really like developing and then the demand for?
Yeah, it's, it's, that's tricky, um, you know, something along the lines of a, a, a resident, I'll call it something that it's not called, but a residential daycare facility, you know? If, if, if we end up saying they're allowed in any, any zone, they're allowed in any zone, you know, whether you're part of a, a, a medium density or a, a low density, you know, comprehensive plan designation, and your zoning might be different across the street, I mean, that does happen. Um, so we, we can look at that and we can, we can see what that, that may be. Currently, yes, you could have a family daycare in any single-family home across the city. There's, there's no limitation of, you know, how many there can actually be.
Thank you, I think my question just prompted me that I have my basic question around the uses. So the sound, as we're changing from, uh, low to medium density, we haven't, can you tell me more about like how that changes the way in which I can use that new designation? And where that, that comes into play, where, where do we touch on the uses component?
And, and, and we'll have more to show in the next couple of weeks, but I don't, I don't think even in the initial draft, there, there were many use changes, it was, it was more just the density, um, the density changes. So, currently, if you were, if you were in an R7,200, 7,200 square foot lot and across the street it was R9,6, because those lots were planted and they were just a little bit larger, they're still both currently low-density residential homes, they have the same allowances that can be within the R72 or the R96. Um, and so the thought is that, that it would be the same for medium density, there may be, you know, with additional density, there may be, um, other, other benefits to, with a denser population could, could, um, support, whether it's a corner store, um, but we could look at saying citywide, corner stores could be in a residential home.
And primarily, it's still residential focused in the low and medium, it just, like Christian was saying, it's really the, the change in density allowed, um, and s- a li- which supports some different housing types and formats.
And, and I think just, if you can help me understand that sense of urgency around planning, right? When we think about the six months and how much more time it will take to do one, um, one approach versus the other, can you help me understand why would we wanna expedite? Cause there's one that's faster to get implemented versus the second one, right? Making the changes at just this zone versus the entire city?
Right, these versus the entire city is, is a much more discreet, um, grouping of updates and, 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 and we're looking at kind of working backward from council adoption on. Kind of working backward from council adoption on December twelve, December tenth. And a public hearing requirement before that with council, but also a public hearing here. And also noticing to Department of Commerce the changes, which has required sixty days and we've got CIPA within there, so. There's a i- it's kind of a past the point of no return, we're almost to that point and and and. We we feel confident that we can approach this suite of updates. Recognizing that there's some on the on the coattails to follow. In the future, as well as other miscellaneous code amendments that have been kind of living within. Community development over the years where we recognized, oh, we need to, we need to fix this, we need to fix that, we'd like to clarify this. Um and incorporate an interpretation into the code.
This would essentially just be ensuring that you're compliant with. The required changes by the end of the year, so that you you have the capacity to meet the housing targets primarily. That would get you to that kind of deadline with the state, uh and then the the bigger look. Would kind of bring everything in the city into a more um. A simpler format for I think users and also staff probably to review and implement.
Commissioner Westerback.
I think you answered the questions I had as you were talking there, but it sounds like this is the first, you know, do do what's required, the first, the first uh outer outer ring and get. Checking those boxes, and then we have the opportunity as a city to sort of take a breath and go, okay, now, what sort of additional layers of. New uses and things like that, do we wanna start to lay in to diversify these zones, to make them more. Particular to Bothell and not necessarily to the state requirements, sort of like, for example, my question was gonna be around uses. Commissioner Lever mentioned, um anyway, we've got corner stores and and maybe expanded childcare, but um I would imagine. We're gonna be looking at more than those, like uses that are low impact, not noisy, smelly, whatever. That seem appropriate for residential neighborhoods, I would hope we'd be cracking that open, I don't know if that's on the table, cause I know we're already looking at it as hypothetical. You know, months months from now, but um I don't know if that's been talked about in staff and and with council or anyone else, just. Not just corner stores, I mean, maybe it's, you know, low impact cafes and hair salons and accountants and people like that. I mean, people are gonna do, or I can, or can already do that at home, I know, but like more of an established office or a place of business. Are we looking at those low impact sort of? Well, open opening that Pandora's box or not?
Yeah, and and the focus primarily has been, how do we achieve our 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 capacity?
Yeah.
Targets.
Job one, I get that, yeah.
And and so that has been, you know, if if we started to, we weren't, I don't think we were ready to blend the. Additional uses within a zone that could then take away.
Yeah.
From the the density that we're trying to accomplish, so that. Those are kind of pulling, you know, would be pulling at each other, um but things like incorporating a a corner store, which might be. The the ground floor of.
That's what I'm getting at, it's like, we we know, you know, okay, you can do six units now, whatever, but you're you're free to, you know. Have a hair salon and a coffee shop at the bottom if you want, or something like that, sort of, start to integrate, cause. There's gonna be, I think, I'll use the word again, tension again, the people are saying, well, you know, let's start to spread the the development out. And then we also wanna make sure people can walk to useful things, they're not in their cars as much and stuff, so we're gonna have to start to get comfortable with those. You can have that little village on the corner, you know? Anyway, I won't beat a dead horse, but it sounds like we're moving in that direction, thank you.
Commissioner ourselves.
Yeah, I mean, I think my question around the timing, I would just like to nail that down because. I think there will be a market effect to just doing this first, right, like. That could create more development that might have happened elsewhere with some of the other rezones. That could drive housing prices up, that could be. A lot of questions we'd have to answer around that, so I I'm I'm thinking more just in terms of what. When you don't do it all together, what, how that shifts the the market and and what happens as a result.
Um, I think. The citywide kind of. The what we're talking about with rezones is actually more outside of these areas is more of a. The kind of rebranding of the zones, so simplifying the zone names, you've got a lot of areas that have. Four or five different zones. Just in a string and it's it's kind of unclear to figure out what applies from each of those different zones. So trying to simplify that for folks, uh it's not so much re-zoning those areas. To allow different things, it's uh more just kind of. Um clarifying it in the code and rebranding what it's called, rebranding the zone essentially, so you have fewer of those kind of combo. Overlays that um aren't as clear for people, um these areas specifically are really. A rezone to get greater density than what they would have been under the residential low. Which is why the focus is on, would would be on uh making the revisions here first to show you have the capacity. For housing, consistent with the comp plan. The other piece isn't. Necessarily. Changing the capacity in the same way that these are, or changing the uses.
Uh so if I'm hearing you correctly, these these are the changes we're looking at um regarding density and use capacity, the rest. The the regulations are not changing, the names are changing um for the the rest of the. Zones, can I say that? Um is that what I'm hearing? So the only changes that are occurring are um. Are in these areas we're looking at, the rest won't have any kinds of changes as much as, except for their names, and is that what I'm hearing?
They, the changes that apply to zones in these areas would also apply elsewhere in the city. So. Trying to answer your question without confusing it more. The, so if you're making a change to a, um for instance, the things that are currently R seventy two hundred. That's gonna apply in. Well, we moved all the R seventy two hundred to RM, so that's not the best example, but. The, there are some changes to like the R eighty four hundred and ninety six hundred, which are kind of your R residential low. Um they're implementing residential low. Those would get renamed essentially, and those changes would also apply elsewhere in the city where you have those zones. These areas where there is potent- there was an eighty, R eighty four hundred or an R ninety six hundred would. Be rezoned to something denser, so not necessarily um. I'm not saying they would be the the equivalent of the R seventy two hundred, but they could move to something like that. So that's where the focus is, is kind of, yeah, it's, so it's adding, it's it's focusing in on where you need to increase the density. The the allowed density is going to change those increased citywide. Because of, in in the residential areas, because of those kind of. Units per lot and the uh the the um minimum square footage size. For the lot that have that have been applied for the for the all of the residential implementing zones. Did that confuse it more?
So.
Yeah.
So, C- Commissioner Jones, and I think I probably started this uh confusion. So, hopefully I won't make it worse, let me, let me try. To ask a, I think, I think a coherent question, I don't know, um so. So getting back to impact, which I think is what we're all trying to figure out, right? Let's forget the density for a second, that has to happen, we've made the decision, it's happening in those areas. We also have some other changes as part of the comprehensive plan. In some of, and some of, and those changes are happening in some of those areas that are dense, but there are other areas in the city. Because of how they're zoned already, those changes will eventually need to be applied to those zones. Right? Is that, am I understanding right? Because the question I'm asking, going back to is the impact, so if we only focus on doing. The cleanup for these areas, what happens to those other areas where. Technically, they should be having the same changes, not density, the same changes, but we didn't clean them up. How does that affect a homeowner or or our user or something there?
So they 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 will include the required changes to the to the zoning, but. The 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 bigger or complicated question was redesignating and kind of. Cleaning up how there's, there are some zones that have some parcels that will have multiple zones. To undo that, we have to go through various sections of the code to make sure we're not missing anything. And and what is allowed, making sure it's it remains consistent with the the current um the current allowances. And then kind of weave our way through what those changes might be, so. For example, we're gonna, we're gonna go through and we're gonna say uh permanent supportive housing is allowed in any zone that allow that. Allows residential, uh so in our residential table permitted uses, we're gonna run across, we're gonna add that to. All of those zones that allow residential. Whether they're on the, in this ar- these areas or they're elsewhere in the city. And we're gonna add some new zone types to capture. This, these areas of change, and then the question on these areas of change for planning commission and council will be. What do those densities look like? Or what are we changing the seventy two hundred to? Is it? What's what is its units per acre, what is its, what is its density when we have so much to 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 work with? Based on the medium density designation, and then the same question for those eighty four hundred. And ninety six hundred, what are we gonna do for the for the lots in here? So th- those are some big questions that we need to get through. And trying to not complicate it too much with a a citywide code cleanup. Project, which it's a it's a lengthy endeavor, um having gone through one before. And there there there's a lot of parts that move and then questions come up and. We wanna make sure we give that, it's 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 appropriate amount of focus.
Commissioner ourselves.
So are you, it sounds like you're saying there's like different layers that you have to get. Figured out for each of these, and maybe this is the lowest hanging fruit and as far as like getting those layers. And then you'll move on to, so that you can streamline, it'll be more clear for everyone involved going forward.
Right, right, the 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 end result, whether it's within six months after the new year, or if it takes us a little longer. Is very clear predictability in the code usability for anyone with a question, what can I do on my property? And it it seems an opportune time to do that, but we wanna make sure we give it the 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 appropriate amount of focus.
Yes, Commissioner Lever.
Thank you. So I wanna make sure that I'm understanding this correctly, so I'm hearing, we're talking about density and use, right? Basically, like the density, which is what we're changing to make sure that we can meet our housing goals. And then the use, based on how we have our zoning right now, it is confusing as it is because you might have different. Designations within one block and we're trying to make it uniform. The cleanup that I am hearing relates back to, in this particular area, you're gonna really come through and make sure that we're. Very clear on what is possible within your lot, right? And I I go back maybe to the question and comment around the market is, what does that mean for a developer? Or what does that mean for a uh someone who might wanna be, but let me just maybe sell and and then if someone starts. Building within the new density, but we don't have the necess- the uses that are needed to really create the community that we. Want to have through the planning, is that even a a possibility in terms of timing that all of a sudden we'll have all these. Like let's say just that corridor there with all, and I guess I'm just making it up, all this. Middle house, let's say, but no uses that will support that middle house or the supporting house without the res- the amenities that we need to be able to support. The the residents in those buildings, is that?
Uh yeah, and and that that's kind of where the conversations don't seem to have gone, you'll. And Jesse, jump in if you if you know the history a little more than me, but the the areas in orange on the map. They're outside of of the the downtown, the Red Barn, Midtown area, Canyon Canyon Park. So the areas that have higher density, frequent transit, um mixed use allowances. Um I don't, I don't believe the conversations went, you know, considered. Changing these designations to to, you know, they're they're medium density residential, not mixed use centers, so. Still keeping them residential zones, medium density residential zones, not mixed use. Not mixed use neighborhood, not mixed use um employment. So that conversation didn't happen, or you would see more purple, light purple um throughout those areas. As part of that conversation, but but some of the 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 discussions have looked at, have have included. You know, how can, you know, can we include? A corner store allowance within residential zoning, but we we can, whether it works for someone or not, that's. That's up to them, so that's, that is one of the items on the list to consider to say. Here's where they could be allowed in all residential zones. Whether you'd see them or not, you know, there's there, if 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 you build a lot of density, people may come to. To put in a a bodega or a a corner store on their first floor. So so the the changes in use in these areas was was not part of the conversation, it was. The density question of low density residential to medium density residential. And maybe that's where a future conversation in five or ten years is, is we're seeing. A corridor or a, you know, an area that has grown with middle housing, middle housing, and it's. A little, it's it's sort of trickled into um, you know, a new um neighborhood activity center, I think there's there's that. The, there's the regional activity center, um and then there's the the neighborhood activity center map. Right there on Commissioner Robson's uh packet, so perhaps that's what happens in the future with these. As as greater density occurs within these areas. To include that, and they shift from residential medium to mixed use neighborhood or mixed use employment.
Nobody to call on me, um okay, so Com- Commissioner Robson here, um. It sounds to me like where you're asking, do we need to all finish this by the end of the year, or can we take it in stages? Um and I am fine with you doing it in stages, that is my input, um it sounds like it would be quite a heavy lift for you to do it. Laughably so, apparently, uh no, no, I think that's great, we gotta be real here, so um. So yeah, you guys know best what the best method of this rollout would be, I don't see any major community setback here. I don't think you have any kind of maniacal plan by implementing this, so yeah, go ahead, do it, slow roll out. As, do you have any idea how long it will com- take to complete the second portion? You said six months, but then. Maybe not so much.
I I'm thinking of typically a comp plan update within, you you move into phase two, which is, let's go through the zoning. And generally, you'd wrap it up within six months, but that deadline no longer exists, so. We we we're going through the work, the the docket, and we wanna make sure that we are capturing those things that could be included in this, so. There may be a more holistic zoning code update that. Will likely incorporate these as well as some of the parking lot items that we had. But we may back off from, you know, areas like the downtown as it works through the downtown subarea work. Will will wanna make sure we're 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 evaluating housing action plan and what that is is discovering. Um and then anything that's associated with it, which that includes parking and heights, you know, all sorts of things. So it's it's gonna be this, probably a continual list of of updates, and so there may be things that that are on this list that become part of a. Parking lot, but we wanna make sure we're 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 able to move forward effectively. To update the code, so it's usable, predictable, um and we we. So it's usable, predictable, um and we, we, we have a short-term uh timeline to to get it, to get it there.
Usable, holistic, loving it. Okay, so I'm good with you guys doing the phased rollout.
So this is Commissioner Jones. I um, I think you asked us a question where there's only one answer. So, so, so I am also okay. Um but I do wonder if, just for the record, there could, the feedback could be that even though there isn't a six-month requirement, um we encourage the planning department to um to work on whatever the cleanup is. I'm not gonna even try to, to to pretend I understand what the cleanup is. But but to work on that cleanup, because it is important for for landowners to to under, all across the city, to have that level of clarity, so they know what they can do with their property or not, right?
Yeah, and and I, I'll, I'll lean in on on our, our really great staff at the counter that answer the phone, answer their emails, really do a lot of work to make sure that they're getting anyone the answers that they're looking for. Even if it takes them a day or two, they will, they will dig into, hey, what can I do? Uh what can't I do? What are my, what are my roadblocks? Um so.
Commissioner Sills, yeah, I I agree with the other commissioners. I just, I know for myself, it always helps to have a deadline, even if it isn't a real one. So I would encourage you to try to have just an operating deadline within reason and understanding that it might take a little bit more time, but just so that you can work back from there and make sure it stays on track for, for everyone's benefit, including your staff who's having to deal with that. And hopefully it results in less confusion, less calls and um move on to bigger, better things.
I second that. And then the other thing that keeps on coming to mind, I think about people who may not have the ability to really pick your brain the way that we're doing or ask the questions that I'm doing. And I, I think about zoning as really one of the key components of equity. And that allows us to really do or create the cities that we wanna create. And it is incredibly complex. So as I think about the rollout and explaining this to the community, there has to be a better way of conveying this information. Like I, I really um wanna support everything that you're doing, I'll make it overly complicated. But for when we do come back and say this is where we're landing, I I just think this is, this is still too complicated. And it is complicated, but I think I I really wanna want us to see how we can do better, maybe like even use us that, you know, I do have a planning background and I haven't been in the planning space, but I I follow and I'm like, am I following? Like, wouldn't that turn it into a mixed income? Like, what? Like, I am, and I, you know, I I have that kind of like technical background. So just wanna advocate for those who may not be uh here with, with us today to really help us understand what it means to have zoning changes and and why why we're doing it in a way that we can follow. Thank you.
Further comments? Okay. At the end of our study session done? Anything else to bring to the table in that? Okay. So that will close our uh study session on the emergent both comprehensive plan. So you guys um got what you needed from us. Uh next will be um reports from members, which is still me, and Commissioner Lever. Um we, let me hand these out to you guys. We were um asked to create a statement for council on our position um regarding uh our, our positioning concerns regarding um how can I, hang on, let me hand these out and then I'll get back to what I was saying. And Commissioner Grufferson, I'm sorry, I don't have one of these for you. I can um maybe email it to you at a later date. I'll read it aloud. These are um prioritizing the steps um in the capital, capital um facilities plan, capital funding plan. Um and that we've discussed over our past two meetings. So I will read this aloud um and then ask for thoughts. Um this would be the statement we would present to city council. Good evening. The planning commission would like to express their excitement about the extensive construction and design projects across the city. We recognize and appreciate the city staff's hard work to research, analyze, and fund major improvements as ever. We on the commission are grateful for the staff's thoughtfulness and dedication. Now staff is ready for city leaders' input in prioritizing the steps towards our multimodal city. Over the course of the two full me, of two full meetings, the planning commission attempted to incorporate the city's values into our improvement strategy. Commissioners and staff raised numerous thoughtful concerns and questions and perspectives, and were ultimately unable to come to a resolution. It is valuable to note that regardless of the project, our discussion returned to four core values, equity, connectivity, safety, and environmental sensitivity. The commission's conversation primarily centered around two transp, two transportation projects, the first being the pathways alongside new roads at two-fourteenth and two-twentieth, which cuts directly through the wetlands behind Fred Meyer. Wetlands are crucial parts of our environment, and the sensitive nature of these areas needs to be respected and protected. Projects in these areas require more investment for construction and more maintenance over time. Even careful construction in these areas can increase flooding, erosion, and population. Oh, excuse me, pollution, thank you. If these roads are built, induced demand may increase traffic in this environmentally sensitive area without solving the problem of congested roads. As other changes in Canyon Park will change the traffic flow in this area, the planning commission would like to suggest that this project, project is deprioritized and revisited after other major changes in the area are completed. Oh, lowercase. The majority of the commission's discussion addressed the two-twentieth corridor and projects along Riverside Drive. Time prohibits an exhaustive summary of our deliberations, but we would like to present a list of findings, concerns, and suggestions. Number one, the commission particularly values projects that positively impact marginalized populations. Complete streets across the entirety of the city, oh, number two. Complete streets across the entirety of the city would be prominent indication of city improvement that provides a sense of unity and encourages use by all citizens. Number three, commission has reservations about the safety of unprotected bike lanes as well as the perceived safety of unprotected bike lanes, which will imprint pact who is willing to use the trail, perhaps more so than the actual data. Number four, with the increased popularity of e-bikes, the commission urges council to review the benefits of distinct bike and pedestrian paths. Number five, mid-range safety measures like Jersey barriers, excuse me, armadillos or candlesticks could be installed on two-twentieth where the street does not receive full upgrade. Number six, the commission acknowledges that the path along Riverside and a bridge from Riverside across Mamish River affect different demographics and therefore has a higher prioritization score than the Riverside path. The cost of the bridge between Riverside and Mamish River Trail removes numerous improvement projects from consideration. The city might explore acquiring the land from um one oh six three four Riverside Drive as a potential cut-through from Riverside to the Mamish River Trail, which would be a less costly alternative to the bridge. Number seven, Riverside is a major southern arterial for the city that serves as, serves several nursing homes and trailer parks. Local residents have been very vocal about need for a safe path in that area. Number eight, with these concerns in mind, we recommend that council review detailed demographic data, maps, and photo visuals to help make the most informed decision possible. The capital improvements plan is a living document and will change with the needs of the community over the course of the next twenty years. I think that's right. We appreciate your attention to these issues and are excited to move towards efficient ecological and equitable both all. Um before I take uh more extensive um in uh comments from you guys, the parts that are in italic bold um were areas where I thought we could cut because, you know, most of the council knows what a wetland is. Or um something like, we raised numerous thoughtful questions and concerns is, probably goes without saying. Um and it does run a little long. And so um this is the initial document. We can include them if you think they're necessary. Otherwise, um I can just go back and cut it. So your insight on that would be also helpful. Thoughts? Yeah. Commissioner West, you're back.
Uh thanks. I like, I like, I like a lot. I I agree, though, that you, you could probably just summarize it in a sentence or two.
Okay.
Just say, you know, we recognize the value of wetlands, not impacting them, et cetera, et cetera, whatever. I know they were even talking about last night, because they went over the stuff that we went over two weeks ago.
Right.
Sorry. And I was gonna say, number six, I know what you're trying to say, because we understand it.
Right.
Little confusing, because it says
Yeah.
across the Spanish River affected, therefore the higher, uh higher prioritization score than Riverside path. Because we decided the bridge was less important, even though it had a higher score, right?
So Mamish, the river, the bridge is less, acknowledges the path along Riverside Drive and a bridge across the Mamish. So maybe I just wanna say the bridge has, okay, so I'll just take out a path.
It was a little confusing, because I know we're saying it's expensive, it's cool, but we probably don't need it, because it would, it would impact too many things we wanna do.
Right, the prioritization score is that um tally that staff came up with, ranking it, uh is that, is that clear? Do you guys know it? Okay. Um so I
I know what you're trying to say there, I just want
Yeah, okay. Um if I take out acknowledges that a bridge from Riverside, if I go directly on number six to, the commission acknowledges that a bridge from Riverside across the Mamish River will affect different demographics and therefore has a higher prioritization score. Um what I wanted to do is just acknowledge it as a higher prioritization score. Um is that necessary? Maybe I could just start with the second sentence, the cost of the bridge.
Are you trying to explain that it's highly prioritized because it's a second bridge? Because we're talking about the second, the the proposed new bridge, right?
Oh, right, yeah, 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 second bridge.
Versus trying to reutilize and make more effective the existing bridge.
Right.
Because it seems like that we were, that's what we were talking about two weeks ago, saying, can we make Riverside more usable? And get that piece of land, maybe, you know, dreaming.
Right.
Make it easier to use the existing bridge, make it more accessible for those Riverside folks, and save a ton of money by not building a second bridge.
Right. I think I'll just start then with the cost of the bridge between Riverside removes numerous improvement projects and won't necessarily go into Yeah, and just take out that first sentence if that's okay.
I just wanna make sure that
No, 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 thank you, I appreciate. Yeah, those are two different things.
Or you might say a second bridge or a new bridge, but you can decide that.
No, that's good.
I think it's great, and I, I agree with all the changes. I was wondering, and number two, complete streets across the entire city, did you mean complete trails or is there a way? Because I, I thought that a lot of conversation was about the bike trail along two-twenty-eighth, right? And so I know number three says reservations of safety of unprotected bike lanes, but that sounds as if it's, well, we, we are concerned about safety along those unprotected bike lanes across the entire city, but I thought it was specifically in terms of that trail along two-twenty-
Yeah, we were, I think, complete streets across the entirety of the city would be, uh yeah, I guess, I mean, a, a complete, I guess it says streets. I think this, when I wrote it down, it was specifically a complete two-twenty-eighth, right? Because it runs across. Okay. I mean, any, any complete street anywhere would be a benefit, but this is specifically referencing two-twenty-eighth, yeah.
And are you still capturing the, I mean, it wasn't necessarily my feedback, but I felt several folks on the commission were concerned particularly about not finishing the protected cor, trail along that street, because we were doing it in
Crossing time to even be an indication of city improvement. Do you want me to say, then add something about um as well as um be safer than one done partially or something like that?
No, 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 I just was wondering if folks would know exactly which
To referencing two-twenty-
referencing.
I think it was, yeah, I think it was two-twenty is mostly what we discussed.
And I would add, I I watched a lot of the council meeting last night, Steve was presenting, of course, the same information. And they talked about it a lot as well, matter of fact, you might have caught it. So they're gonna tie, they're gonna clue into the two-twenty-eighth mention right away from what I saw last night.
Okay.
Because it's, because they had a lot of discussion about the same issues we did.
Yeah, I'm sure they did. Okay, so with those changes, can, maybe somebody can make a motion just for me to take off that first with the changes, um cutting out the um parts in bold about the wetlands up on top. And then um the changes to number six there, where we just start with the cost of a new um bridge between Riverside and Mamish River Trail. Um can, with those changes, can I get a motion to approve and send it to council?
I move to approve with the edits we've mentioned.
Commissioner Lever, second.
Okay, can we get um any discussion? No. Okay, yeah.
Uh Commissioner Lever, I just wanna make a comment and acknowledge Commissioner Robson's um help through this process. So this is the first time that I do anything like this with the commission, and then I am so grateful for the time uh that she gave to this project and everything that I did learn uh from you. And I really appreciate it, and I wanna acknowledge um the onboarding that I got.
Thank you, thanks. Okay, um motion and second, uh all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion approved, thank you. Thank you, staff, for waiting quietly on the sidelines and your patience. We have any reports from staff?
Uh we have a couple of notes. Uh as discussed, the transportation element went to city council last night. Their conversations were very similar to yours on September fourth. Um we do have an upcoming engagement event at Sustainable Mania, so community development will have a booth or a tent uh where we're gonna be um providing information on comp plan, the upcoming downtown subarea plan, housing action plan, and sort of the work that we're doing, uh looking to just use it as a, an opportunity to, to get more, uh more information out there. Um and then just that, that note that I mentioned earlier, that the October second meeting has been moved to the October third, um same time in this room. And that's it.
I think um council will probably also like the, us to give the reminder that on September twenty-fourth, they're asking us to join them. Uh just, I'm, I'm not even sure where that is. Do you guys know where it is?
It's here, isn't it? The meet and greet and mixer where
Is it, is it just here? Okay, good.
Probably.
For a meet and greet, probably with, yeah, probably with them.
I'm calling at the board of commission prom. It, it, it is here in council chamber. It's given the season, it's homecoming.
Oh, fancy. Okay.
I'm being goofy, sorry.
Okay, um if there is no further business, um is there a motion to adjourn? Commissioner Lever.
Yeah, I just have a comment or acknowledgement. So I do wanna recognize that Hispanic Heritage Month is beginning, and I do wanna make sure that everyone knows how grateful I am for the opportunity to be serving the commission. And um another thing that I sort of just wanna bring to the table is around um sort of like the onboarding, I was just planning of of um of our members, because I think it's been, I don't know how many months since I joined, and I, I find this experience wonderful. And I really wanna make sure that part of my own learning, the process and learning what is expected of me uh can be something that we can pass on to new members, so that you don't feel like you're sort of on your own figuring it out. Uh so with that said, I love the uh idea of having almost a retreat, really understand who's at the table. I spent time with Commissioner Robson, and that was super helpful to understand her values, my values, understand what we bring to the table. And I would love for the community to get to know us more and for the staff to really help us sort of like get the zoning one-on-one per se, as a reminder, so we don't come up with questions that, I'm sure you're like, what did she just say? Yeah, I did ask that. So I um, I'm just kinda like requesting for that space so that we can really make sure that we can onboard new members and that we have that continuity in a way that it is efficient for your processes, so that you have better, um Commissioner Sills. Thank you. So happy Hispanic Heritage Month.
Oh, thank you, thank you. Okay, um great. Is there any other um comments or reflections at this time? Thank you, Commissioner Lever. Um so do, with that said, do we have any um motion to adjourn? Commissioner Sills.
I move to adjourn.
Thank you. Sarah, second.
Commissioner Lever, second. Thank you. All in favor?
Okay, well, thank you so much for your time this evening. Our next week, excuse me, my next meeting will be October second, if I'm not mistaken, or is it October third? Thank you.
Thank you. Note that this is a Thursday and not our usual meeting time. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Vice Chair. It's been a real pleasure tonight.